Today is Tuesday, February the 11th, 2025, and the board meeting is now called to order. It is 6:03 PM. At this time, we'll have our land acknowledgement by Dr. Shandiria.
Thank you, Chair. We are gathered today on the land of the Kalapoya, who are represented by the Confederate tribes of the Grand Ronde and the Confederate tribes of Selts Indians. The relationship between the Kalapoya people and this land continues unbroken to this day. We offer gratitude for the land and for the generations present and past who have stewarded the land since time immemorial. We respectfully acknowledge and honor past, present, and future Native American and Indigenous students and staff of Salem Kaiser Public Schools. We invite you to join us in honoring these ancestral grounds and celebrating the resilience and strength of all Native American and Indigenous people. Thank you.
Will you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Superintendent Castaneda, are there any modifications to the agenda?
No, there are none.
I will turn this portion of the agenda over to you.
Wonderful. Well, we are in spotlights. And also, I love this effect of almost half of our audience being students today. It's going to be an exceptional period of spotlight and also performance. So the way that spotlights work is we are going to ask speakers to come. The speaker will talk about the spotlight. And then after all of our spotlights are done, we're going to reconvene over here and take some photos. Today, since it's also a very special month, a very special board meeting, we will have a student performance after spotlights. So I would like to start, and I'd like to introduce Lindsay Radke, Culture Center teacher at Candelaria. And she will come present our community spotlight. And you can just join us up here.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. This evening, we are honored to recognize an organization that has made a profound impact on the students and community of Candelaria Elementary School, the Salem Kaiser NAACP. In the spring of 2024, there were incidences of discriminatory speech directed at our students of color. Staff and administrators were able to promptly act, but the harm was caused by those words, and they couldn't be erased. Our staff and administrator agreed we needed to strategize ways to improve the culture of our school. The Salem Kaiser NAACP 1166 Branch has helped our school foster a culture of safety, respect, and belonging for all students. By partnering with the NAACP, we have received invaluable support for our student and school community. President RJ Hampton appeared with me today, and Vice President Ashley Dunn dedicated their time to listening, analyzing school data, and brainstorming strategies to make meaningful change. They visited our school and engaged in meetings to generate ideas that would ultimately bring a positive change to our building. Thanks to their collaboration and efforts, we opened a culture center where students explore different countries and traditions. Students serve as Culture Center ambassadors for our center, researching, creating displays, and sharing their heritage with peers. Every two months, the focus shifts to a new country, featuring new student-made posters, crafts, recipes shared by their families. Parent involvement has grown as families contribute meaningful traditions to the center. We have some of these remarkable Culture Center ambassadors with me tonight. Desmond Beautiful, Riley Tatiana, and Camden, could you please stand up? I'm really sad I can't face them right now to say these words of affirmation. Your hard work and leadership as an ambassador will forever have an impact on your school. Thank you so much for your incredible thoughts and ideas, for your family recipes you've shared, and all of your creative ideas that have made each center so incredibly beautiful and unique. Thank you guys so much. One student recently shared with me, "When I grow up and have kids, I want them to go to Candelaria so they can see where I worked at the Culture Center." This has touched my heart and has stuck with me, and it just shows that the center is making positive impacts on our students. Curiosity is increasing along with cultural awareness. The ambassadors are becoming amazingly leaders in our school. Some of their creative ideas include laying flowers on the floor that led to an ofrenda in our Mexican exhibit. Another includes making a Holidays Around the World timeline that literally reached nine feet in length in our center. The impact of our partnership with the NAACP is real, and we're seeing it. Our latest Panorama survey results showed a significant increase in students' sense of belonging, especially among our Spanish-speaking population. Incidences requiring intervention and correction have dramatically decreased. An example that education and inclusion are powerful tools for change, especially among our young learners. Thank you so much, Salem Kaiser NAACP, for your unwavering commitment to our students and community. And I know Ashley's not here tonight. She had a huge impact in this and had amazingly creative ideas. So from a distance, I want to thank Ashley too for coming to weekly mentor some of our students who were harmed by the discriminatory speech. Again, centers are of course being highlighted today, as they should. But the NAACP has helped in different ways too that can be felt in the hallways and in the classrooms, and now with our yearly tradition of a Heritage Day at the end of the year too. So we encourage all schools to reach out to the NAACP and embrace the opportunity to create lasting change like they have for us.
Before you all leave and before the students sit down, I also just want to add, we'll further extend our gratitude to the NAACP for many things that you do, but most recently hosting Right to Read as a community event, an ability to come together and talk about the power of literacy as a tool that every single student and adult deserves to have in their pocket. So thank you for that. And then also to the Candelaria Huskies, I want to say I have been to the Culture Center. It is amazing. Everything she said is true. It is a spectacular place. And the thing that I wanted to share with beautiful Desmond, Tatiana, Camden, and Riley is that you're building this culture for your school. And it's taking ownership of what you want Candelaria to be and then making that true. And so we're just really grateful to all of you too. All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll take pictures at the end. Okay, our next spotlight is going to be coming to us from Derek Handley-Doit. Oh, there you are. Assistant Principal at North Salem High School.
All right. Good evening, Chair Richardson, Board Directors, Superintendent Castaneda, and Student Advisors. In recognition of Black History Month, we are honored to highlight an important addition to our district's curriculum, the Black and African History Course, first offered at North Salem High School and now expanding to several other high schools. Tonight, we recognize not only the course itself, but also the dedication of Lindsay Turner, the first teacher to instruct this course, whose work has made a lasting impact on students in our community. This course was developed alongside Ermola Barua, Social Studies Program Associate, with input from community partners, student and school board representatives, and educators across the district. Designed to engage all students academically while fostering a sense of self-efficacy and empowerment, it provides a space where Black and African students can see themselves reflected in leadership roles. Research shows that well-designed and well-taught ethnic studies courses not only improve critical thinking skills, but also contribute to stronger democratic engagement, an outcome that benefits all students. In just one year under Lindsay's guidance, this course has profoundly impacted students at North Salem High School. She has created an environment where students feel supported in exploring challenging topics like racism and history, developing leadership skills, and engaging in meaningful conversations. Her caring approach has empowered students to think critically, take academic risks, and shape their college and career aspirations. One student shared, "I don't usually like to talk to teachers, but with Ms. Turner, I feel like I can actually have a conversation with her." The impact of this course extends beyond the classroom. By fostering open, courageous discussions, Lindsay has helped students build confidence in addressing difficult topics, even with adults, while creating an inclusive space where all students feel valued. Research shows that participation in ethnic studies can significantly increase high school graduation rates and post-secondary enrollment, reinforcing the long-term benefits of this work. Tonight, we recognize Lindsay for her leadership and commitment to our students. We are grateful for the dedication to expanding opportunities for our students and ensuring that all voices are heard, valued, and represented in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you, Derek, for all of that. So our final spotlight tonight is a student spotlight, and it is coming to us from Sprague High School. And I'd like to invite Jacqueline Pope up.
Oh, sorry about that. All right. So good evening, you guys. Chair, where are you? You are. School Board Directors, Superintendent, and our Student Advisors. Thank you, guys. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing two extraordinary students from Sprague High School, Colin Williams and Matthew Myers. You guys, can you come up here? Sorry about that. We can practice this. Okay. Their dedication and passion have made not only the We the People program history in Salem Kaiser School District, but they've also made history in Oregon and nationwide. We the People is a prestigious program that challenges students to engage deeply with the Constitution and develop and apply critical thinking, public speaking, and civic engagement. Typically, teams are classes between 18 to 36 students in size, and they're responsible for mastering one of the six units required to compete. We brought We the People to Salem Kaiser School District back in 2019. However, due to challenges like COVID, staffing changes, and limited resources, the program faced setbacks. Two years ago, the class did exist. The class just participated as a demonstration team because six units seemed like too big of a feat. However, this year, advanced constitutional law again was not offered, same as last year. And these two decided that it wasn't going to stop them. So what did we do? Well, they decided that they wanted to have the team. They knew that they needed to do all six units if they wanted to be competitive and that it needed to be a class. So we created an independent study, Sixth Period, and Colin and Matthew attacked it all themselves. They prepared all six units, 12 different speeches, which were four-minute speeches in a hearing form, and then it's followed by six minutes at regionals of question and answer from a panel of judges. The two of them taking on the workload is six times the work, six times the speeches, and an unprecedented challenge. In doing so, they became the first duo in the We the People history in the nation to attempt this, and it started in 1987. So before you guys were even a thought. Many thought it was impossible, and honestly, I had my doubts with the crazy workload, but I knew these two were crazy. They researched. They spent countless hours diving deep into study, having late nights on Zoom or Discord or whatever it is that they do. And they did virtual meetings outside of school hours with Oregon Supreme Court, former Oregon Supreme Court justices, constitutional scholars, professors from around the nation, and just even teams on the East Coast who have a history of being active in this community. So they put a lot of work in. They made history competing in January at Nationals, not only just being a non-Portland Metro team, which we, Sprague and Salem Kaiser, the only one. Yay, go us. I'd like more. But they qualified for state. And that was a first. Even with our competitive teams in the past, we had never made it, and that it was a two-person team was just outrageous. We cried a lot. Two weeks later, I found myself in the courthouse that I myself competed when, back in the day, years ago, when I was a student, at like us-we-go-high-school for We the People. And I watched these two with overwhelming pride as our Salem Kaiser boys delivered their arguments with confidence, with passion, and with crazy-deep constitutional understanding. Their hard work paid off, like unbelievably paid off. And they placed second in the entire state. That's a crazy feat. Usually, the top two teams, just so you guys have an understanding, go to Nationals. There's 48 teams at Nationals from all around the nation, and one of those two Portland Metro teams pretty much win almost every year, if you look at the history. And they got second. Just the two of them. Then two days later, they received the wild card invitation to Nationals. And so they are going to be now preparing 18 speeches representing Salem Kaiser, Oregon, and Sprague in DC in April. So it's an unheard-of achievement. Beyond their competitive success, Colin and Matthew have ensured that advanced constitutional law remains alive in Sprague and Salem Kaiser. They've inspired students in our district and across the nation with what is possible, with passion, opportunity, and resilience. Tonight, we recognize Colin and Matthew, not just for what they've accomplished, but the legacy that they are building for future generations. Their story is proof that when students are challenged and supported, they can rise to the occasion and achieve the extraordinary. They exemplify what education, determination, and civic engagement can achieve. Thank you for representing Sprague, Salem Kaiser, right, and Oregon so well. We're going to be cheering you on. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much for that. Colin and Matthew, I will say that I am a big fan of the not very popular niche podcast subgroup called Constitutional Law. So you speak to my heart, and in fact, I did really want to get there to see you. I already told my husband we were going to do it and then found out there was no audience seating. So next time. Thank you so much. All right. So now we are going to bring all the spotlights up. We're going to do a round of photos right over here, and then we will welcome the Hauck Choir.
Is she in the immediate hallway? Okay, so I think Lindsay is leaving. Can you, I'm going to go talk to Jessie. Can you do my portion? Just to introduce the choir. And I'll talk to Jessie down there.
Now we are in for a special treat. Please welcome the Hauck Concert Choir, directed by Matthew Bailey. They will be performing the song, "Lift Every Voice," and sing by Stephen D. C. Sarey in honor and celebration of Black History Month. Please come forward.
Let every voice and sing to earth and to heaven ring. Ring with the heart of ease of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the liches inside. Let it be sound, the rouse of all exhale. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark has destined us. Sing a song full of the hope that the president has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Stony the road we trod into the chaste run in the days when our war had died. Yet with a steady faith and not our weary feet come to the place for which our people sign. We have overcome a whale and the tears have been lost. We have come treading a path through the blood and the slaughter. Out from the gloomy past soon now we stand at last where the white clean of our rights and our rest are discussed. God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, the who has brought us the far and the way. The who has by thy light led us into the light. Keep us forever in the path we tread. Lest our feet stray from the places our God where we meet thee. Lest our hearts drunk with the wine of the world we forget thee. Shadows be shone by thy hand. May we forever stand true to our God and to our native land.
Thank you all very much. It was beautiful.
Thank you very much to the Hauck Choir, to the Hauck Choir Director, and also to the very proud principal who joined us to cheer everyone on. Magba.
Now we will move to the superintendent's report.
Well, we'll also close out just this first celebration of Black History Month, although there'll be many more opportunities. although there'll be many more opportunities throughout our district and our schools to celebrate Black history and the incredible contributions, joy, creativity, insight, power, all the great things that Black and African Americans have brought to our country. So, it's a long month, and there's lots of time for celebration. My superintendent's comments, I think a deck is getting queued up, are going to change tone kind of abruptly, so I give everyone a heads up in advance about that. And what we're gonna be talking about tonight is actually providing you a quarter two financial overview. As a brief reminder, when we started our work last year as a community, we said we would continue bringing quarterly reports to full public discussion in board meetings. We did our quarter one report back in, I believe it was maybe September. And we are here tonight with quarter two. So, we're gonna ground it once again just a little bit of school finance vocabulary. So, remember fiscal years, they correspond to a school year, but they end with the larger of the numbers. So, right now, we're in fiscal year 25. Most of the work we're working on is anticipation of next year, fiscal year 26. Another key thing to remember is budgeted expenses. That is the amount we can spend that we've been authorized by the board to spend on a particular item or body of work. A forecast expense is a little bit different than that. That's the amount that we believe we actually will spend, based on differences in the moment. We can't spend more than you allow us, but we can and sometimes do spend less. And then finally, vacancy savings. We do have about 5,800 employees, and at any given time, we do have unfilled positions. We are working all the time to fill those positions. It is absolutely our goal to be at 100% fill rate, but with the number of employees we have is rarely within reach. And so, the vacancy savings is the amount that we save financially through the accumulation of those unfilled positions. Okay, with that, let's take a quick look. So, first, I'm gonna remind you about what quarter one looked like. And we haven't looked at this graph in a while. We did it a lot last year, but the black line at the top is our ending fund balance. The blue line is our revenue. That's the amount we are getting from the state in our general fund, and the orange line is our expense. And so, in quarter one, you'll see we were really starting to see the results of the extremely painful but necessary reductions we made last year. You can see, most importantly, how that blue and that orange line are basically touching. What that means is that we are actually spending the amount of money that we're getting. We're not spending more. And you'll see an ending fund balance of right around 91 million. That's at the high end of our policy target, but it is something we'll talk about more in a moment. So, that's quarter one. Let's take a look at quarter two. There's a few changes here that I wanna walk you through, but I first wanna go back and say, once again, we see that expense and revenue line touching. It is hard to be a school district right now with all that's going on and be managing a balanced budget. And the Salem Kaiser School District is doing that. And this is a really important piece of our overall stability as an institution. We have to work to hold on to this balanced status. You'll also see our ending fund balance has jumped up a few million, up to 99. And if you go to the next slide, I will show you why. So, here, you'll just see a comparison. This is the differences, the changes between quarter one and quarter two. And what you'll see is we have a little more revenue, mostly because of interest. And some of our investments are performing a little bit better than we anticipated. You'll also see that our expenses are just a little bit lower. And you'll see that, based on this, if everything holds exactly as it is today, which it will not, there will be more changes, up and down. We anticipate an ending fund balance of about $99 million. One of the things I wanna underscore here is that we're bringing you quarterly updates about how much we're spending, how much we're bringing in, and then we're using that to predict to the end of the year. That's why these numbers change. And they're gonna keep changing all the way through closeout, because there's always money coming in and going out. But you will overall see a story of consistency, which is that our budget is balanced because of the hard work last year, and our ending fund balance is healthy because our budget is balanced. Those two always travel together. And then, if we can go to the next slide, I just wanna tee up what's coming. So, for the board, for the budget committee, for the members of the audience and the community watching, every biennium in Oregon has got budgetary uncertainty, because the board is building, well, sorry, the district is building a budget. The board is preparing to approve a budget. And we're doing all of that without having certainty about how much we will be getting from the state. So, you can see that bar at the top, the long session kicked off in January. And all of our work will be done in the midst of some growing clarity, but also uncertainty in the long session. It's uncertainty about how much money we will get. It is also uncertainty because there are, I think at this point, close to 3,000 bills. And many of them impact both revenue and expense in public education. They will come and go, they will change, but we will not know about all of the relevant factors in our context until the long session is over. And that is after we will have built our budget. The second thing you'll see here is licensed bargaining, which we are looking forward to starting in late February or early March. And you will remember this from last year. This is one of our biggest cost factors. And so, we will not know for the next budget year how much, what our expenses are until we complete that bargain. We need to move now into a period of unprecedented federal uncertainty. I've been doing this work for 20-some years, and I've never seen such uncertainty about the federal context as it relates especially to funding here. So, we will get an initial estimate of our federal funding sometime in about April. And then, a federal final could happen in July, but it is also subject to appropriations and a lot of other things that are beyond our control. What I wanna emphasize here is that these are the moments when a healthy ending fund balance is especially important to a school district. Because there could be delays, there could be changes, there could be things happening inside of that otherwise quite stable federal appropriation that will change what we do and how we do it. And then finally, at the bottom, you'll see amidst all of that change and those scattered timelines, the district's responsibility and the board's responsibility to produce a responsible budget. So, this is a kind of a quick overview of all the things that are happening as we close out this fiscal year and we move into the planning for the next one, which is right around the corner. Can you go to the next slide, please? Okay, so then finally, a quick reminder, some things we know and some things we don't know. We know that there is a $20 million annual increase in PERS. I've said this before, but it bears repeating. If the governor's recommended budget goes through as is, it could be approximately $80 million in new revenue for Salem Kaiser, half of it goes to PERS. Or said another way, half of it goes to pay for expenses that are not part of the core operations of schools every day right now. We also know that our non-personnel costs are increasing, just like every household's non-personnel costs are increasing. Utilities are more expensive, everything is more expensive. We know that there is a 4% ask ESP COLA that will be going in next year. And we know that we're gonna start licensed bargaining. The key things we don't know. We don't know how much money we'll get from the state. We don't know how much money or what the terms will be on the money we will get from the federal government. We don't know what the May adjustment is. And we don't know what our licensed personnel costs will be. This is uncertainty that we can function in. It's not entirely foreign, but it is the broader context that we are in as we move into budget season. And I believe that is it for my superintendent's comments. Thank you, Chair.
It is now time for the public comment portion of the school board meeting. Please note that we provided an opportunity for public comment by call-in, Zoom, in person, and in writing. Each participant has three minutes. Electronic mechanisms are used for translation. We have a countdown timer on the screen for monitoring our time. The timer counts down from three minutes. At 30 seconds, it turns from green to yellow. At one second, it turns red and plays a short bell to signal time is up. Please be mindful of your pace for our interpreters. If the board receives written comment ahead of the meeting, the written comment will be posted on the district website. Tonight, 10 people signed up and have been selected to comment. Tyler Skelos-Lakeberg.
Good evening, school board chairs, directors, and student advisors. I'm Tyler Skelos-Lakeberg, the president for the Salem Kaiser Education Association, speaking on behalf of our members. We want to applaud and thank our district leaders and this board for taking the initiative and messaging to our families and our students that nothing has changed. Even in these uncertain times, we will continue to show up and educate all students. We also want to call out and be thankful for the recent collaboration that has led to settling for MOUs, Memorandum of Understandings, important work to fill some needed gaps. We also want to call out appreciation for the ongoing collaborative work of our elementary class size committee. While the scope of the work is large and the resources are small, it's the right work in the right direction. And later this month, we will be back at the bargaining table as our contract expires this June. We hope that the spirit of collaboration will continue through this process. We believe that our proposals align with district goals. We want better schools and better outcomes for our students. We know that our working conditions are our student learning conditions. And you cannot put students first and put educators last, because we are the key to student success. We are hopeful to continue the work of class size reduction as studies show that when students have better access to their teacher and more individualized time, they perform at higher rates. We also want to recognize that our special education services have been operating at a deficit for years, and we appreciate the district's initiative to write that work and for the long-term systematic changes that will be happening. These educators serve our students with the highest of needs. And it's these educators that also have the highest turnover because their workload is unsustainable. We hope that we can right-size this and bring about the supports and resources that they need so they can be successful in serving their students. I've said for years that we cannot fix all the problems of public education, but we can rewrite the narrative for Salem Kaiser Schools. We can do something different and do the right work and be an exemplar to other districts. We need to do better, and by working together, I believe we can do better. We are Salem Kaiser, and together we rise. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Eckhart. Nicole Fernandez.
Hi, my name is Nicole, and I'm in sixth grade. As a daughter of immigrants, I'm stressed about if someday my parents get deported and they try to call me in school and I wouldn't be able to answer the phone because it's locked up in the yonder pouches, and it has to be off. Now, at school, my grades have dropped a lot because I worry about my parents could try to call me for the last time in the US with me, and I won't be able to hear it because my teachers tell me I shouldn't worry about it. This has been causing me anxiety and stress, and this makes me not think about school anymore. I think it's wasteful to spend $1 million for something that doesn't work. If you asked every student in the district about the yonder pouches, they would say all, all of them would say they don't work. Instead, we could invest the money for immigrant students whose families have been deported. It's not right for immigrant students to have to worry about where their next meal is coming from or if they're getting kicked out of home because they're not able to pay rent. Because of this, I demand to end the yonder pouch program in the Salem Kaiser School District.
Thank you. Janaree V. Janaree V. Yesenia G.
I am here representing 200 members of Latinos Unidos Siempre, a youth-led organization based in Salem that houses leadership development for dozens of students from Salem Kaiser School District each year. This week, we launched a petition in support-
Excuse me, I'm so sorry. I think, can we ask you to go just a little bit slower? Our interpreter's king. And move closer to the mic? Thank you.
This week, we launched a petition in support of our effort to end the yonder pouches program in Salem Kaiser School District. In only one week, we have collected over 350 signatures of community members that agree that the yonder pouches programs harm immigrant students. Yonder pouches cut communication between students, community resources, and loved ones during school hours. Communication has become very important to immigrant students and families. The terrorizing presence of immigration enforcement in our communities have increased toxic stress among immigrant communities and students. Yet, students cannot report ICE activities with trusted organizations or check in on their families when they are feeling anxious. Communication with loved ones is essential to supporting the safety and mental health of immigrant students and their families. Our base board members and district leadership must take an honest approach to yonder pouches. A 2024 study found there is little to no inclusive evidence that cell phone bans like yonder pouches improve academic performance, mental health, and wellbeing or reduce cyberbullying. Yet, this program was implemented here along with more surveillance and weapon detections. This week, we also received dozens of messages from students who are being negatively impacted by yonder pouches. Number one, students are being targeted and punished more than before for the simple use of cellphones. Number two, the district says that it wants to improve attendance and academic performance, but students are telling us that they are being suspended or being pulled out of class for violating the yonder pouches rules. And number three, let's not forget about the students who cannot contact their relatives in times of crisis, including mental health, physical health, or other emergencies. It's creating more toxic stress. When the children of immigrants can't communicate with their parents, it's a farm worker issue. You have not heard these stories. It is simply because this school district has not made the space for, to hear from students. On behalf of our members, we demand the end of yonder pouches and reinvestment into rapid response and wellness programs for immigrant students. There is no time for debate. Our school district must act fast to protect our immigrant students now.
Thank you. Sandra Hernandez.
I am here today in defense of students and families in Salem Kaiser School District.
in Salem Kaiser School District who are being affected by the federal immigration policies that are also taking place here in Oregon and also in the midst of experiencing the rise of fascism. This year, the school district implemented the yonder pouch program. The student investment count is being used to fund this program. This program forces middle school and high school students to lock their phones before entering school. Now, students are unable to access their phones throughout all of the day that they're in school. If a student is experiencing a mental health crisis, if they have a family emergency, or if they need to connect with resources outside of school, they are forced to rely on their school staff to access any form of communication. This type of implementation assumes that our schools have the infrastructure and programming to make communication accessible to students. But the last time we checked, our school district had cut 425 jobs, which have left, made it almost impossible to reduce classroom sizes and implement more adequate resources. The yonder pouches program has included adding a new form of disciplinary practice. Now, students can get searched and questioned for being suspected of having a phone. Not drugs, not weapons, just having a phone. Students can also, this leads students to mid-school and fail in their academic success. We also passed a resolution recently that commits the school district to uphold Oregon sanctuary status. However, the yonder pouch program is a direct contradiction to this resolution as immigrant students are increasingly facing the threat of deportation of their loved ones. Yet, they don't have the simple access of contacting them. Additionally, the district has implemented a weapon detections program that is costing millions of dollars. This is supposed to be a prevention program to gun violence in our schools. However, in the event of an emergency, how are students supposed to get in contact with their families or local authorities? If a school has over 2,000 students, are schools equipped to keep students safe and in direct communication with their families? Your budget, your programming, and your infrastructure tells us that you're not ready. The yonder pouches are simply a form of control and policing over students. It is simply dishonest of anyone to say that yonder pouches improve mental health and attention. Our students deserve access to resources and support to understand the impacts and responsible use of technology. I understand that our educators have a difficult job, but stripping students of their rights, criminalizing them, and taking away community resources will not decrease any form of not paying attention in school. Instead, it's going to decrease the quality of our education system.
Thank you.
Alfonso V.
My name is Alfonso, and I'm in the sixth grade. I'm here today because I wish the thoughts on the school board and leaders in our district could make the right decisions for us. But your decisions are affecting me in a bad way. This year, you all made a decision to force students to use yonder pouches, which lock up our phones. The decision has led to students getting in trouble for very small reasons. The school district is violating our rights by using the excuse of phone pouches. Last week, I was pulled out of class for suspicion of having a phone in class. A phone, not a weapon, not a drug, a phone. Please take a moment to think about that. My belongings were searched. I was also about to be patted down. I was told that I could get suspended if I have a phone with me in class again. What this means is that our education will be interrupted with punishment. To me, this defeats the purpose of phone pouches. The school district is criminalizing students and is cutting our communication with our families and resources and has been taking away our rights to our privacy. You all don't understand how anxious I feel that I cannot contact my parents at this moment. My family is struggling, and right now, our school staff hasn't done a good job of making me feel safe enough to reach out to you. But yet, you're ready to make me into a criminal. Do the right thing, end the phone pouches now.
We want to thank all of our commenters that have given us input. Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the back. I miss those. All right. Alex Buran.
Me llamo Alan, tengo ocho años, yo voy a la escuela Lamp. Estoy aquí porque tengo mucho miedo que-
Eight years old, I go to school. I apologize from the interpreting booth, but I have no sound.
Porque eso yo quiero que se termine el programa de yonder pouches.
I want the yonder pouch program to be-
Este programa no deja que mis hermanos pueden hablar con mi mamá y mi papá. Por favor, escuchen los estudiantes, no más yonder pouches.
Please listen to us students. I apologize, but I couldn't hear Alfonso very well.
Hello. Hola, mi nombre es Chris. Estoy aquí para hablarles sobre los yonder pouches.
My name is Chris, and I'm talking about the yonder pouches. I'm here to present my reasons to reinvest the yonder pouches funds to the bilingual programs. Students, or certain students need more assistance. This impacts me. Because when I ask for help, I'm one of the last who receive help. My classmates are also left behind. You should reinvest the yonder pouches money in the bilingual program. I would like to know what process you followed. Because it doesn't make sense to me that we have this. You didn't ask if we wanted the yonder pouches. We are the ones who have to buy and put them inside every day. This impacts my mental health. It creates a divide between us, our friends, and our families. Yonder pouches cut communication with our families. And this is worse for my classmates that have no documents. This causes stress, fear, worry. I have an uncle who was out of prison when my mom picked him up. I apologize from the interpreting booth, but I can hear myself and I cannot get to hear him very well.
Thank you.
Sir M. Sir M. At this time, we want to thank all of our public commenters for their comments this evening. Thank you very much for being able to be courageous and brave and coming to share with us the information that you shared with us. At this time, we will take a break, and we will return at 7:10. Thank you. Back in session, please. The next item on the agenda is to appoint three new members to the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee is a 14-member committee consisting of our seven board members and seven community members appointed by the board. The board opened the application process January 3rd through February 3rd and received a total of seven applications for three open positions for terms to expire June 30th, 2027. The Budget Committee candidates received instructions to submit an application and record and upload an optional five-minute video interview answering the- record and upload an optional five-minute video interview answering the following question. Last year, Salem Kaiser Public Schools made the most significant reductions in over a decade. This year, the board and district must balance the urgent needs in schools with the responsibility for maintaining financial health. What questions would you ask as a Budget Committee member to help us find that balance? We want to welcome all of the candidates, and I'll name the candidates that we will be voting for tonight, so please look at your ballots. William Mark Guthridge, Jean Gitan, Jessica Peterson, Esmeralda Vasquez. William Mark Guthridge, Jean Gitan, Jessica Peterson, Esmeralda Vasquez. Vasque- oh, Kiss, Kiss, got it? Thank you. Appreciate you. The board reviewed all applications and video interview submissions and will now vote. We appreciate your willingness to serve. At this time, I will turn it over to our attorney, Rebecca Jacobson, to facilitate the voting process.
Chair, if I can jump in, I just want to make sure we confirm that we've got the right list. No Esmeralda, okay. So was the full list that Chair read less Esmeralda? Okay, thank you.
So we're now voting for three?
It was left Brian Ruffalo's. I was trying to read them off to him. So let me tell you again who we're voting for. William Mark Guthridge, Jean Gitan, Jessica Peterson, Esmeralda?
Ben?
Kiss.
We're removing Esmeralda?
No.
She is, she is not here tonight, and she submitted an application. There was no video, and she is not here tonight.
Okay, so I need to take off?
Yeah, we've received no communication about her interest in continuing.
Esmeralda?
Esmeralda is also gone.
So, so you only now have three candidates?
That's all, Ashfee.
Yeah, so, I mean, procedurally, could I maybe just make a motion that we add, we appoint William Mark Guthridge, Jean Gitan, and Jessica Peterson to be Budget Committee members?
It's been moved by Director Pressy and seconded by Director Sandgiri that we vote on or approve William Mark Guthridge, Jean Gitan, and Jessica Peterson. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Yes, please.
Can we at least see them and let them, since they come prepared, can they say one line or something like that?
Okay, we saw their videos.
No, but they are there, but...
Well, we're in the middle of a motion. So let's finish the motion, and then we can ask them to speak, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor?
Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry.
Before we take a vote, can we please have time for discussion?
Sure. Discussion.
Oh, thank you.
I think, oh, Director Carson Cunningham on line, but it's muted.
Director?
It, it, it's not Director Carson Cunningham. On our TV, we've got the little mute flashing, so like there's no sound coming out for us.
Okay, well, now we can.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um, I just had a question about the process. I thought, we reviewed a packet that had quite a few applications, and then I thought that we were just told the video was optional. So are we not now supposed to consider all of those and only consider the people who've submitted videos and/or was being present part of the criteria as well? I'm just very confused.
Of the full applicant slate, we did have a number of videos submitted. The ones that we have excluded here are from people who, and I will ask to confirm this when I'm done, submitted an initial application but have since not responded to any email, did not set a, did not submit a video, did not respond to any of our reminders to attend, and did not attend. And based on the lack of confirmation, I have no reason to believe that they continue to have an interest in being on the Budget Committee. The remainder of the folks who are now on this list submitted videos and are present obviously are continuing their application.
Yes.
Chair, can I make an amendment to the motion saying that we will exclude those folks who did not respond to the email, did not show up or present them, you know, but so that we will exclude them from the slate of candidates for today's proceedings?
Yes.
I see, I see Rebecca has a comment. So not on this motion, I think the board, because that is, the premise of that is that you would not accept the first motion. So I would say the board should vote on the first motion, and then if that does not pass, then you could vote on this procedural piece.
Thank you.
Well, can I ask?
Any more discussion? Any more discussion?
Yeah. I mean, we are voting on that motion Director Ineosse Pressy raised, assuming that there are only three. That's my assumption. So I'm kind of procedurally unclear. So by voting on that, there is nothing left? So will that be an objection raised by those whose names were not considered? Should we kind of consider this motion, the motion I raised first, and then bring up the motion that Director Ineosse Pressy, if you don't mind, like a friendly request, can you withdraw and we can bring it back?
I think it's implied in the motion.
Because we are assuming that only three, and you're just kind of going ahead.
I mean, I, I think, sorry, Chair.
Yes, Director Pressy?
Uh, I mean, I think the question that we have, okay, we're kind of falling outside of the scope of discussion, discussing the motion. But the question that we have is, is it obligatory and is it clearly stated that when somebody applies for our Budget Committee, is it clearly stated and/or an obligation to submit an application, submit a video, and be present for the meeting? Because I think, I think that's kind of the outstanding question that I'm hearing from Director Carson Cunningham and Director Chandgiri.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. We do not say it is required. This is the first time in my history here where instructions have not been followed via process. And people have not followed all of the steps in the process.
Yeah.
I think it is, in our minds also, further complicated by the fact that we did actually work quite hard to get all of these responses. And for whatever reasons might have been at play, we have heard nothing since the original application suggesting their interest in continuing.
Chair, may I?
Yes.
And, and Director Carson Cunningham, because I, similar to your question, we'd, I'd say as leadership, we discussed whether we would move all applicants forward, considering that not everyone had submitted videos by the deadline, and this was exactly it, right? That we wouldn't just discount anyone for that reason. And so we have all the names here, and what I'm hearing tonight is that there was no further response and then no attendance from those remaining four, four names.
So, Sophia?
I was just going to say that two people, Director Carson Cunningham and one of the applicants were waiting to speak.
Jessica?
Hi, School Directors, Madam Chair, Superintendent. As I look back at my email, there was nothing stated that it was an optional or that it was something that was not going to be included. The email does state that materials received, application and video materials would be reviewed for this meeting. So I just wanted to clarify what we got as applicants, that there was not like a, this is an optional video. It was a, please submit your video, be here for the meeting on Tuesday. So I just wanted to clear up any ambiguity there. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Director Sandgiri? Oh, I'm sorry. Director Cunningham? I can't see how old they are, disability, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I just, I think I'm following on what is being presented. I just am still a little confused because we received a whole packet to review and the, and the three videos. And so my assumption was we were to consider everyone who applied and signed an application. Looking at last year's instructions that were sent out, it just says, like, the application, you know, has to be signed and received by, for consideration. So I'm just, yeah, it's just simply a procedural question whether we can, should consider everyone who submitted an application or not. I think it makes sense what everyone is saying, that other people weren't responsive, but if we weren't clear that there were multiple parts to the process, I just, yeah, I don't, I just want to be clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sandgiri?
Well, precisely for that reason, I would like to submit this motion saying, as a board, if we say, answering those three questions, whether in person or via video or by any means, is also an element of decision-making that we will consider. Hence, I would like to raise this motion once again, that we will exclude those who have not come in person or submitted the video or indicated their answers to those three questions in any other way, to be excluded for today's vote and consider those who have submitted.
Yes, at this point, there are two motions on the table. If Director Ineosse Pressy would withdraw her motion, then we could consider Dr. Chandgiri's motion. That would be the next step, or the next step is to vote on Director Ineosse Pressy's motion.
Yeah, do we need to have a motion for this procedural thing? Because it feels like something that we could clean up. I don't know.
Yes.
No, I, I don't think, I, I think there can be an administrative reason why you're only considering the three that complied with the directions.
I'll look to the Chair. What do you prefer?
I'd like for us to go ahead and vote on the first motion that was on the floor.
Okay.
At this time, all in favor of moving the three people forward that submitted an application, that submitted a video, and that showed up for this meeting, be appointed to the Budget Committee. All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. We want to welcome our three new members to the Budget Committee, Jean, Jessica, and Brian. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, William. Forgive me. William, Jean, and Jessica, congratulations and welcome. If you'd like to have remarks, please feel free at this time.
Could we hear at least something from them? One line at least?
They need, we need to hear one line from you at least.
Good evening, can you hear me? Fine?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, thank you. Jean Gitan here, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be part of the Budget Committee. Looking forward to meeting all of you.
Thank you.
Hi, William Guthridge here, also Bill Guthridge. Thank you for considering my application, and I look forward to participating.
Hi, Jessica Peterson here, graduate two thousand and seven, class two thousand and seven, excited to partner with you and all that you do for our district.
McKay graduate, thank you.
McKay graduate, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, and looking forward to more communication by email from Ashley Stovin and our superintendent. Thank you. So all of this, I got over. All right. I will hand the next portion of our meeting over to the Superintendent Castaneda. We're looking at the Jane Goodall.
Thank you, Chair. So this is a continuation of the discussion that we had when we were last together, where we discussed the J.Gems renewal, charter renewal application. And this is an opportunity, I recall there were questions about the, deeper questions about the program, you wanted to hear about the demographics, some of the outcomes, and this is an opportunity for you, the board, to hear directly from the Charter School and engage in discussion about the recommendation for a renewal. So with that, I am going to ask that J.Gems Executive Director, and as I understand it, person who does all number of important things, Doug Gutner, to join us, and we will queue up the board presentation for J.Gems. And also Mike Whittle, I'm sorry about that. All right, we will turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Superintendent Castaneda, no, Castaneda. I worked on that, I practiced.
You did.
And members of the board, Chair Richardson, thank you very much. Last time we were here, I gave my prepared remarks, so I don't want to do that again. But we do have some slides that give you some data, and I'd like to go over those for you, first of all, and then answer any questions that you have about the Charter School. Okay? So here's our vision. Empowering young minds to steward and transform their world. That is sort of a paraphrase of Jane Goodall's vision as well. Those students are, that is classroom work for us out in the field. We spend a lot of time out in the field, and in fact, on our application, we don't have an essay to write to get in, we don't look at grades, we have students and parents say, are you willing to get cold, wet, and muddy and work beyond school hours? That's all we require. Next slide, please. So here are our demographics, and I won't, you know, read that to you, you can see that. There. Doug, do you want to say anything about?
Yeah, just to clarify on the demographics where it says American, that's American, Indian, Alaskan native population as well, just to clarify. And then, yeah, as you can see, everything else.
Okay, next slide. Here are our test scores compared to Salem Kaiser in blue and the state in gray. And that's been consistent every year for twenty-five years. Next slide. So what is unique about J.Gems? Our focus is environmental science and technology. We have our field-based and project-based learning school. We have, I feel, incredible partnerships. We've worked on fostering those partnerships for a long time, and that has been very, and that has been very, very successful for us. And we have a local and statewide and global impact. We work with some organizations in Europe and Australia and so on. So we have, I think, an impact. Next slide. This is what I'm most proud of. These are our community partners, and I could go through those and tell you at great length about what the students do with each of those organizations. But I won't unless you ask some specific questions. But we're very proud of the community connections that we have. We have been supported by the district for 25 years now, and we've also been supported by DEQ. We get supplemental environmental project grants from DEQ. We work with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and a lot of work with them that they don't do with anybody else. Oregon Zoo, Oregon Zoo Foundation, and on and on and on. So it's been a very rich community engagement and outreach process for us. Okay? And I think that's the end of the slideshow. Is that, isn't it? Yep. So do you have any questions about that? Or would you like me to talk more specifically about projects and some things that I personally know or stories that I have? Yes?
There's one, you know, last time I shared with you our own personal journey with J.GEMS. So it's a wonderful model. I mean, there's one question that you used to track long ago. I don't know if you're still doing it. It's the post-secondary metrics of what happens to these kids eventually when they go beyond 12th grade from our school district. To me, that is one way to measure the entire school system. And foundationally, you guys are kind of creating that mindset.
Yeah, well, I can share two things. First of all, we tried tracking kids. We tried contacting them with their parents' email addresses three or five or 10 years later, and that didn't work because nobody's email addresses were what they were when they were in the eighth grade. So that, we didn't have very much success with that. We do have anecdotal stories, and in fact, we have the, a program that we started last year on the suggestion from two of our parents who are on our board, who have been on our board for 20 years, long since their students left J.GEMS. And they thought we should start a program called the J.GEMS Hall of Fame. So last year, we had a J.GEMS student who was in J.GEMS, must have finished in maybe 2005, 2006. Cassidy Hoon. She is now a physician, working in a cancer hospital in Tanzania, working on infectious diseases and cancer. And all of that came out of her contact with Jane Goodall and her wanting to travel and wanting to give back to the community. So we had her zoom in to our eighth graders last year to talk about her experiences in J.GEMS and what that has done for her and for the students, the kids with a whole variety of diseases that she did not go into, thankfully. But it was a very moving experience, I think, for her and for our students.
Chair.
Director Pressey.
Thank you. I would love to make a motion to approve the Jane Goodall Environmental Middle School Charter School application for renewal.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Director Pressey and second by Director Harnish, that we vote to approve the J.GEMS Charter School application for charter school renewal as proposed. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah. The question I wanted to kind of raise is, is there a ceiling in terms of capacity? How many students can be there? Or could your program model be scaled up beyond what you have? Because such a, you know, there's a track record of 25, I mean, quarter century of what you're doing, it's a fantastic model. And ideally, it gives people opportunity from all zip codes to come to your school. That itself is a unique model of bringing integration of children.
We have considered that often, expanding. Right now, we have essentially one sixth grade, one seventh grade, one eighth grade class, 33 in each. So we expanded from 30 to 33. But if we get much bigger than that for the model that we have, that has not been successful. However, I will say, and I mentioned this last time, we received a dissemination grant from the Oregon Department of Education, and we have shared our model around the state of many, many, many schools. I gave you a number last time. We also work with the Diocesan College Education Fund, and I manage that fund, and we give out grants to teachers to do the kind of work that we do at J.GEMS. That's a private endowment that gives out grants. And we've given out about $650,000 in the last 10 years in grants. So we're trying, but we haven't expanded the school.
Yes, Chrissy.
Thank you. Is that to train the teachers within the Salem Kaiser School District? Or just all over? The grant that trains the other teachers to teach?
Could you repeat that? I'm, yeah.
I think I understood you, maybe I was incorrect, that there's a grant that you are able to, that is helping fund you to be able to teach what you teach to the J.GEMS students, to other teachers. Is that within this district, or is that all over?
That was from the Oregon Department of Education. So I and two other retired teachers literally traveled all over the state, including workshops in Salem. But we, it was a statewide program. So we were in Hepner and Hathaway and on and on and on, yeah.
Well, I'm excited that you're an example of the bar that we can achieve again overall. You're doing it, so thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much. I'll be supporting, you know, the work of J.GEMS. I was at Waldorf Middle School. I remember having J.GEMS as peers and, you know, interacting with that. And just always witnessing, right, the work that they were doing outside and the different trips. So it's something that I had the opportunity to witness during my time in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. I will say the one area that I'd love to see some collaboration or just, you know, however we could partner as a school district as well in terms of having the demographics of J.GEMS be a little more representative of the community of Salem Kaiser and both our district, but of course, our regional.
We have been working on that for 25 years. And Doug, you want to tell what the process is now?
Yeah, we've learned over the years, the biggest obstacle or the biggest kind of, you know, roadblock for families is transportation, right? And that's something that, you know, how do you, how do you work with that? So we've worked with a lot of family members to try to create a really extensive carpool program. And so as students get in to the lottery, we connect them with other parents within their area of Salem so that it's not just on them. You know, they can work with those parents to find other means of transportation. And then also, we've worked in, we've really tried to get information about J.GEMS out to every single fifth grade student in the district, what we're about, what we do. And we found that in doing so, we increased the number of applicants. And in doing so, we can also diversify the number of applicants and in that process, hopefully diversify J.GEMS more appropriately. So we're, you know, we're at the school, the deaf campus, which is in the Highland community. And that's what we're striving to do, is try to more mirror that community, more mirror Salem Kaiser. So we've also improved diversity upon our staff. One of our office managers, you know, identifies as Latina. It's been great that she's able to speak Spanish as well, which is a need for many of her families. It was a difficulty at conferences and things for them to be able to speak, and having her involved, available has helped a lot too, so.
Two minutes, yes.
Do I, so I want to ask a follow-up question because the transportation is this barrier that's taking. And, you know, charter schools typically get, what, 80% of the proportionate budget, right? Is there any state law that prevents you all to get, use the Salem Kaiser transportation? Or is it our district policy? I'm not entirely clear why we can't have a bus that goes around town and picks up kids for school.
Superintendent, as the transportation nerd, can I answer that? Or could we hand it over to TJ? I don't know.
I was going to hand it over to TJ, so.
Transportation nerd to transportation nerd.
Good evening, Chair Richardson, Superintendent Castaneda, members of the board. So there are avenues that I don't, during my tenure here, we haven't discussed those, but there are avenues which our transportation can provide for those services. We do need to look at how that gets covered cost-wise because 70% of our transportation is reimbursed. But then there's costs added to that when we add the charter school. So there's more discussion there. So long way of saying nothing prohibits it, but we haven't had the conversation.
So I, just even the city bus was supposed to be free for children, right?
So the Salem Area Mass Transit District did make free bus passes. And again, I do just want to note procedurally, we have fully deviated from discussion on the motion. So I mean, like, happy to take this conversation at a different time. But yes, the bus passes for anyone under the age of 18 are free. However, that doesn't necessarily mean that there's like a bus line next to where J.GEMS is. That doesn't necessarily mean that the students that are attending J.GEMS have easy access to bus stops. There's a whole bunch of infrastructure issues that the Salem Area Mass Transit District faces. We're working on it, but it is a work in progress.
And for the record, we do have students that do take advantage. And we promote that as well, fit with families and with students to make sure that's a possibility.
At this time, we'll take a vote. All in favor of the motion on the floor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Of course, Cottenham says aye.
Did she say?
Yeah.
Aye. Everybody?
Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. Thank you all.
May I say one more thing then? First of all, thank you very much. And now that we're continuing to be J.GEMS, this is our 25th year. And just yesterday, we finalized the deal that Jane Goodall will be coming here to celebrate our 25th anniversary with us. She'll be doing a public lecture on April 10th. She was here for our opening in 2000, and she'll be coming back for our 25th. So you'll see posters and so on. So literally, we just settled that yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This brings us to our consent calendar. Superintendent Castaneda, do you wish to provide review of any item on the consent calendar?
I do not.
Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent calendar as presented.
It's been moved by Director Pressey.
A second.
And second by Director Cottenham. Any discussion? Or do we discuss?
We don't.
We don't discuss, I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
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 Unanimous.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Do you do the information standard or some of this?
For the information and standard reports portion, I do want to briefly call your attention to the continued parade of executive limitation reports that are flowing through your board packet. And what you received is six, seven, eight, and nine. And again, as a reminder, the executive limitations are the bookend to the results policy. The results policy tells us what we are responsible for pursuing and achieving. The limitations tell us what we may not do as we pursue those. And then within those, I do want to further call your attention to executive limitation six because we have placed in that one a voluntary corrective action plan that gives us an opportunity over two years to review, to review, assess, and make improvements to the administrative evaluation process specifically for district staff. Thank you.
Thank you. As a reminder, everything in the information standard reports section is provided for the board's review ahead of the meeting. Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have board reports, and I'm going to start with our two student advisors. Any minute, anyone?
So we just had semester finals a couple weeks ago, or like two weeks ago. And we, I'm just so excited to be halfway done. Very nervous, but very excited to be halfway done. And, well, personally, like, not related to my position at all. My little sister goes to Lee Elementary, and she's been having some trouble with some not-nice kids in class. And I'm glad that the principal was able to get it handled. And just a reminder to teach your kids to be nice, or their classmates, older siblings might find them. Just kidding.
Okay, you got to graduate, girl.
Recently at McKay, just want to talk, Scott Sapella had its fundraiser concert in preparation for, we're going to Los Angeles on Thursday, performing for the Los Angeles Acapella, Los Angeles Acapella Festival. Super excited for that. The concert was awesome. I know within the, within the music department at McKay, I remember the, our symphony orchestra is also, I believe, going to Chicago. So lots of really big musical achievements going on at McKay. It's super cool to see.
Good job.
Thank you. Director Pressey.
So I'm excited to bring you all down. So we had the SCATS Policy Committee meeting last month. So again, the Salem Kaiser Area Transportation Study is an entity for some federal pass-through money for infrastructure investments in the Salem urban area as defined by the census. So that the representation is made up of Marion County, Polk County, the city of Turner, the city of Salem, the city of Kaiser. Salem Area Mass Transit District is there. Salem Kaiser School District is there, and we are adding in the city of Aurora. And since it's the beginning of a new calendar year, we did elect a new chair and, which is Lyle Mordhorst, and re-elected our vice chair, Sadie Carney. But I did want to note that the policy committee has a waiting system in terms of how they consider projects that are submitted from the various entities that participate in the policy committee. So again, you know, if folks ever ask themselves, "Why isn't there a crosswalk there? Why isn't there a sidewalk there?" And, you know, maybe you ask the city of Salem to put in a crosswalk or a sidewalk, and they say, "We don't have money." We'll go to the SCATS Policy Committee to see if we can get approved for funding to be able to complete this project. We have a waiting system that had, last year, increased the prioritization for any project that bettered the infrastructure in terms of safety for pedestrians and bicyclists. And this last policy committee meeting, the policy committee decided to revert that decision and bring the waiting back to what it was previously. And I just wanted to highlight that in 2024, just in Salem, 22 people died in fatal car crashes. There's many variables involved in each car crash, but they're mainly a function of speed. And I am wholeheartedly opposed to the fact that we will not continue to consider the needs of bicyclists and pedestrians and instead try to move forward with projects that instead encourage speed, as in expanding roadways. Those, in an ideal world... Those, in an ideal world, we would encourage drivers to reduce their speed and to be more mindful of the other modes of transportation that are around them and making sure that they're paying attention. And I strongly recommend if any community members also feel strongly about making sure that the policy committee is prioritizing safety, there is public comment options. You can find that link on the Mid Willamette Valley Council of Government's website. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Director Guzman Ortiz.
I'll be super quick. I was one of three board members at the Scott Capella fundraising concert, and we had a blast. My kids came along, and my 10-year-old said that was really cool, and that was really fun. So next time, I invite you all to come along. And then also, the All-City Middle School concert back on February 1st, which is just, I believe, other board members were there as well. Director Sajid Tonagiri and Ashley Carson Conningham. And it's just a joy, and it's incredible when you're watching those kiddos. And I can't believe they're middle schoolers, like, they're so talented. And it's just so joyous to watch the talent and then the dedication that I'd say both students and families and educators put towards building skills that are going to have a lifelong impact on, on our kiddos. So it's just always such a joy. And of course, reading some executive orders from our federal government as well. That's, I think that connects.
Thank you. Director Harnish?
Yes, first of all, I just want to say how much I enjoyed the spotlights tonight. It was really, they're always impactful. But hearing from the choir today and then also seeing the great work that's happening at Candelaria was setting up a warm and inclusive environment was just really inspiring. So thank you for bringing that forward. Also want to recognize that West was held up by ESPN and the Special Olympics for their work on the unified sports. I think it's pretty incredible that our district is not only doing this work across the district, but that the school is recognized by those two entities. That's, that's pretty exciting. And I hear somebody got a shirt out of the business, out of it. But, and wow, did I enjoy the concert. Thank you so much, Kayden, for you and your team. My husband and I both went and just really enjoyed ourselves. And it was great to see you in action and just amazing talent. So thank you.
Director Hudson?
I won't talk long. I think Aaron Gerardo was at that concert too, the All-City. But anyway, thank you. It's always super amazing. That's the best part of this job is to see the life and the passion of all the students and, and teachers that, that love it and genuinely love it. So thanks.
Dr. Sandra Gary?
Oh, thank you, Chair. Well, you know, the middle school All-City concert was just amazing. Thank you, Ashley, for letting me know about that. And, and that was just amazing. It is just like professional class. And it was good to see the children from all over the middle school. It kind of reminded me of my own kids when they're growing up. The second thing I just wanted to share is with everything going on in our nation, in our town, we started a Braver Angels of Salem. We are an official branch of the national nonprofit which tries to bring people together. And they have a Braver Angels program for schools and students and community members. And once a month, we'll be meeting in the Ike Box on the fourth Friday, 5:30 to 7:00, just to get people to sit down and kind of hold a conversation despite all kinds of different perspectives. And I am really excited to participate in that. And we had like 30 members who showed up. And, and I really thank some of the local radio stations for giving us an opportunity to share that. And like today, we saw that in the spotlight, the two students who have taken an amazing job of constitution, and they just run with it. I feel hopeful that this will be a good opportunity for all of us to sit down and listen to each other, connect with each other, and much needed now, more than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Cottenham?
Thank you. As Director Guzman Ortiz and Director Shonda Gary mentioned, a week ago Saturday, I got to attend the middle school All-City concert. It was awesome, as they both mentioned. Our kids and music educators continue to just be incredible beyond words. I also got to go to the musical Mean Girls Junior, put on by the eighth graders for Howard Street Charter School, and that was also phenomenal. I wanted to say also how proud I am to be part of a district that's taking a clear stand to protect our immigrant students. Thank you to the superintendent and her team for getting information out right away after we passed the resolution that's consistent with our values to all the families and students so that they know their constitutionally protected rights and know how to safety plan. Our students really do deserve to feel safe when they're in school and in our communities. And then lastly, just thank you also to the superintendent for her recent message of love and inclusion for LGBTQIA2S+ youth and staff. I think it's critical in these times to be clear about our values and how much we care about all the kids across Salem and Kaiser. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Pressy?
I was reminded of some other, like, theater and musical excellence that we have in the district because South Salem High School did a production of Hadestown, which is a really amazing Broadway musical, if y'all haven't seen it. But honest, I heard great things about South Salem High School's production. I didn't get to personally see it because that show was sold out like every single night. And the superintendent didn't get in either. So I'm just saying.
I forgot that. I, I got to see it. It was amazing. In the black box theater funded by, you know, the bond work, it feels like you're in like a New York black box theater. And the kids were phenomenal. Hadestown was.
Sorry, I also went and did forget to mention, my friends were actually one of the leads in the play, or two of the leads in the play. And they really did great. And it was, the best part of it is that the like background that was built, like, I know that a lot of you guys didn't get to see it, but there was like a background with like metal and stuff. And the theater department reached out to like our, like, wood shop, like mechanics, whatever department, building, yeah, to like build them. And so they had like a little bit of collaboration within the programs, which was really cool.
Thank you. Wow, great things are happening in our district. I too attended the Right to Read event with our superintendent and Ogah Cobb. It was outstanding. And any, anybody who has children that are trying to learn to read, they need to see that. It was awesome. I too went to the Scott Capella fundraiser. They're going to Los Angeles Thursday. They are still accepting donations. Please feel free to make your donations to them to be able to enjoy that trip. Wow, I am so proud to be a part of this district. And we want to share with you the great things that they are doing. The State of the District event that will be held on February 18th at 6 o'clock PM at North Salem High School. Go to the website and register and make sure you're there. If you're not there, you're square, okay? Child, childcare provided?
Childcare, incredible entertainment, delicious snacks, all sorts of reasons to come.
I am proud to say that I'm the first African-American, Black high school principal in Salem Kaiser. I'm proud to say that I have chosen to stay here because of the great things that this district continues to do to help the African-American, Black community as well as all students to excel. But I can't let this moment go by without saying that 17% increase in graduation rate is because of systems that have been put in place. It's because of people that have been hired that truly care about all students and are willing to go up and beyond to make a difference and helping kids to believe in themselves. Believe that they can learn and believe that they can graduate. That makes a difference. And we have those type of people for all of our students. But I'm, I'm just, I don't think you'll see this nationwide anywhere, the type of progress that Salem Kaiser has made. And I'm just thankful to be a part of Salem Kaiser School District. And thank you for approving that proclamation. Did I get everybody an opportunity to speak? It is 8:03, and this meeting is adjourned.